To everyone that spoke, no matter what side you spoke from, no matter what political party or what ideology you may come from, obviously, this is impacting, this pandemic is impacting all of us. No matter where we live, we're all being impacted. And I just want to thank you for respecting this institution. It gets tough at times, right? We get emotional, we get passionate. But I really appreciate the fact that we were able to get through everyone. Their speeches, their voices were heard here publicly as well as on the phone. So I thank you for that. And let me just say that I think that all my colleagues here are in agreement with you overall when it comes to the reopening of the economy. I think that people obviously want to move in that direction. We have those conversations on an ongoing basis. We've been having these conversations for quite some time. And interestingly enough, though, today's vote is not necessarily about that, right? Today's vote has to deal with four orders, in which you probably heard already time after time again, dealing with the issue of school closures, dealing with the issue of short-term lodging facilities, the issue of golf courses, the issue of facial coverings and social distancing, which is what we're going to vote on later today or later this evening as we all deliberate. But the conversation about reopening is very real. And I think that all of us were taken back, and honestly, I think disappointed, when we heard the news from our governor. As a matter of fact, that's the reason why we held the vote on Tuesdays, because we thought that potentially there would be some good news that can help us. And fast-tracking our efforts from moving from Phase 2 as we are now with curbside pickup from retail to try to fast-track into Phase 2.5, as some people say it, which means like the opening of restaurants, for example, or theaters. And so, the original goal behind this vote, if you will, of these four amended guidances that we have from our public health officer was to try to align ourselves with the governor so that we would not have as much confusion as we were having, because people are wondering, what's the state saying, what's the county saying, and then what are our cities are saying, you know? And so, we were just trying to say, okay, why don't we just get rid of that and figure out how we can align ourselves and coordinate with the governor's office? Well, as that occurred, little by little, I began, I'll speak for myself, to realize from different entities, depending on where they were with these four items, some folks didn't want to rescind and others folks did. And so, it got to a point where I started to question. You know, for example, when it comes to the closure of schools, I thought that educators would want that in a sense of us getting rid or rescinding our order as a county, because our order, I think, only went up to June 19th. The governor's order actually has extended until July. So I thought in my head that, you know, if we did that, it'll bring some clarity for our educators. And they only follow that order up until July. Well, later on, I learned that our superintendents, our educators from the public school system, K through 12, said, you know what, we actually need more time. We prefer, though, that you keep your order, because it'll allow us to plan with you, and it'll give us some clarity and specificity. And so, I began to hear from them, and I began to hear from many others on these orders. The truth is, though, we've made a lot of gain as a county. In spite of where you are with the data, right? Ultimately, the county of Riverside has been at the forefront of making sure that we protect our residents, even more so than most counties in the state of California. You know, we were one of the first counties to begin testing. We were one of the first counties to expand our testing. We're the, one of the first counties to get, we are the only county to get up to over 2% of the population to be tested. We have not only five sites, but now we have eight more sites that are starting to come from the state of California, we have a few more, so we're going to have up to 13, 14 sites, many more sites than anywhere else in the state of California. We've been able to figure out how we can open up a federal medical site in case we did have a surge, and we were able to put that together with the guard. At the end of the day, we didn't even have to use it. It's still there in case we have a surge, but we haven't even used it to this day. And on top of that, we haven't even used the one that we were going to build on the West End that was going to serve 125 patients. And I attribute all that because of the good work that the county did early on and continues to do, and because of our constituency. Our constituency taking this responsibility serious of social distancing, of staying home, staying in place, going out only for essential reasons. And so, I think all of us came together to make sure that we are in a better position. And I wholeheartedly believe that. However, on Tuesday, or yesterday, rather, we heard the news. News that, quite frankly, is unattainable by the county of Riverside, and quite frankly, unattainable by any urban county in Southern California or throughout the state of California. When you talk about Orange County, when you talk about San Diego County, whether you talk about Ventura County, when you talk about LA County, when you talk about San Bernardino County, when you talk about Riverside County, there is no way that we could meet the threshold of no more than one case per 10,000 people in the last 14 days. That's unachievable. We know that for a fact. There's no way that we could meet the threshold of no COVID-19 deaths in the past 14 days. That's impossible. That's impossible. There are other areas in which the governor spoke about that we can meet, like protecting our essential workers and making sure that we're consistently working hard to have the equipment and the PPEs, ensuring that ultimately we're ready for that surge whenever it comes. We can attain those, but those other thresholds are very, very difficult, and we know that. So all of us here are on the same page with you as to our concern in trying to move into Phase 2.5, if you will, or opening up the economy. How are we going to do that with these thresholds? So know, though, that we're having discussions. We asked our staff, working with the Economic Recovery Task Force and working with our public health director officials, coming together and figuring out what thresholds make sense that we could demonstrate to the governor that we are achieving. And moreover, how can we work with our other allies or friends from our other counties like Orange County, San Diego County, San Bernardino County, and form a coalition in which we can come together and say what thresholds make sense for all of us? And then maybe we could go ahead and advance that and advocate that at the state level and demonstrate to the governor that we're being responsible. But at the same time, making sure that if we're going to reopen, we're going to take on precautionary measures. So we're going to open up businesses, let's work with our business community. I talked to a lot of business folk, and they mentioned to me that, you know what, they're willing to open, they want to open, but if that requires facial masks or coverings, they're willing to do that. If that requires gloves, they're willing to do that. Beauticians already are doing it, barbers already are doing it. So people are willing to adjust. They just need to be supported. And I appreciate what Supervisor Jeffries brought forth. I don't want to steal his thunder, he can go speak to it, I'm sure, a little later. The principles for a safe and considerate reopening of Riverside County, he put something together that I think is going to work fairly well, we're going to have that discussion. I have a letter here. San Bernardino County put together a letter, I have a letter here that I'm going to ask my colleagues to take a look, to consider, and which will say to the governor, to give us a chance, work with us. We have people that have been responsible, they know what they need to do. And my hope is that through this process, we're able to organize our districts, our local leadership as well, and having our local mayors and council members to support this, and then as well having counties to have a unified approach. Potentially, we could move into 2.5 with reasonable measures, with reasonable thresholds. But at the same time, not letting up on that pedal and continuously doing what we're doing right now and what we've been doing. Why can't we have both? I don't see a separation. All of us want to reopen, and all of us want to make sure we take care of our public. So let's do that. And so, I'll stop there, and I'll have my other colleagues go ahead and speak. There's a lot more for me to say, but I'm going to go ahead and ask Vice Chair Spiegel to go ahead and take the mic.
Well, you've shortened my words. Just to bring it up is that we, when we brought this forward, I brought this forward for the mere fact, we need to streamline, we need to be prepared, ready to open our businesses. There is no question. I mean, for the past eight weeks, we've been, we've worked under the governor's guidelines. And the promise has always been, we are working to get our businesses open. And as Supervisor Perez says, we've had the most testing done per capita in the state for all the counties. We follow the state and county health and safety restrictions. We've had, our staff has done an incredible job with the data and the information and focusing on our vulnerable communities. Some of you who haven't followed, they have just been amazing with our senior communities that just, were just overwhelmed with the virus and had lots of challenges, but they overcame. And it was incredible, the time and the work, and as they have said, had no idea the hours that'd be put into this. At the same time, we've taken away, and we've used the word rights of many of the members in our communities. But I look at the right of earning a living and providing the basic fundamental needs for our families. It's the house and food, just real basic stuff. And we've had to have people from our communities that had been embarrassed to come to our food pantries, but they aren't able to put the food on their tables. Somehow, we've got to get back their spirit, their confidence. We need to get our economy open. We just can't step and do that, but if we get prepared and do everything we need to do, as you've heard, we're facing $100 million in debt. We just can't continue. And what people don't understand, they want us to hold off, but all their resources will be not able to be met. We can't do the services here at the county. We also value the sales tax, that's half of our budget. And if we continue down this path, we will not have much left in this county. And so, we want to offer the jobs and people to go back to work, to get our sales revenue. I know Ali came and told us how much that loss is. Each piece is tremendous. Getting our manufacturers back as of today, that's great, but some of them are, it's going to take a while to come back. So we must step up and open these businesses and do everything we can. Now, one more business in Riverside County should have to wait for government, but we have to. We can't just turn on the trigger. And the reason why, we want to go through the process as quick as we can, and if we don't get a response, a positive response, then we can look at it. But if we don't, the funding from the state, if you look at Yuma and Sutter and some of the counties that have chosen to go against, they're small counties. They don't have the enormity that we have down here. We're the fourth-largest county in the state. And with that being said, we have $100 million already lost in our revenues, and to have the state start holding funds, which they're doing to the other counties in writing and letters, that's something that we have to be careful. So we're going, we're going to take the steps. Today's not a vote about opening up. Today's not about opening up. But Supervisor Jeffries has a whole plan that we can get it done quickly and partner. I think that's really important, because I've been working with San Bernardino, as Supervisor Perez has brought up, about coalitions. There's power in numbers, trying to get Orange County on board, trying to get San Diego. If we can get the power and the numbers, at least we have San Bernardino and Riverside County coming together. We submitted a plan, that's the next step, to open, submit the plan. They're working on it, we have our recovery task force, we have our red team, we have everybody working diligently to get this done. The thing that I really am nervous about is, people talk about pulling the public health orders. Well, the public health orders don't address mental health, economic health, and the consequences to the millions of Californians that happen, and the United States. And I realize that every human life is precious. So that value is on both sides, and we have to be very careful as we move forward. The other thing with businesses, as a reminder, you've heard this, is that the state is pulling licenses on those companies that are opening against the rules. Medical professionals, lawyers, accountants, restaurants get their ABC. Someone said earlier, we can step in and intervene. We don't have control of the licensing, that's a state entity that we don't have control of, and the barbers and cosmetologists, that's what scares me, those small businesses that need to be opening. So I wanted to try, and that's why I put this on the agenda, let's get this done right, let's go to the steps. If those steps don't work and we don't get a positive response, then we could choose to do another direction. But if we don't take the right way first, we may be hurting businesses worse in the long run. And that's more of my concern, is to make sure that we do this properly. And the schools is an issue, Mr. Perez explained that. But as I like to make the motion, that we do rescind with, except for the schools. But I would like the removal of vocational education, higher education, out of the schools, so it's just K through 12. But the other three, and in regards to face masks, the state and the federal do not have a mandatory face mask. San Bernardino no longer has it. Orange County doesn't have it. And I think, I don't want to put Dr. Kaiser on the spot, we spoke about removing the face mask. So when people talk about the medical, there are so many experts beyond our ability, we would not do something that would be harmful. And when the state and the federal government aren't mandating them, I don't believe it's harmful when they are the ones that oversee. So with that, I'd like to make the motion of rescinding A, excuse me, B, C, and D, and amend A to exclude vocational education, higher education.
Do you want a response from Supervisor Perez? Supervisor Hewitt, I think you're in the queue.
Get ready, this might take a while. This is by far the most impactful decision I've ever made in my life, by far, above any I've ever done it. I've been in politics, or I mean, in elected office, for about nine years. No impactful decision, when so many people are so passionate about both sides, is ever easy. And I'm not saying it should be. In fact, it should be so painful that we feel the pain of both sides. For the unknown caller that is the COVID, the young COVID survivor, I want to tell you that in 2004, I contracted West Nile, and I got a lot of meningitis, and for 11 months, I almost died. But I want to tell you, even though I felt I wasn't going to make it, especially when it went on so long, I did, and things did get better. I so, so hope you do too. But that comes with something called hope. Ever since this has come down, we've come out with things like essential employees, essential business, meaning the other ones are somehow non-essential. We have created a caste system in this country where we were told in school that those were horrible, they did those in India for years and still have them, but somehow, people weren't as important. And they weren't considered as important, and they, we didn't look to their needs. And today, today, I couldn't be more proud of a county that has such a diverse number of people that have so much passion. Now, we talk about science, we talk about physicians. Tuesday, if you want to go back and speed up that 11-hour video, you can watch me take my mask on and off at least three dozen times, because each person that came up and spoke about how good it was to wear a mask, or how bad it was inside it, actually, scientific studies both ways, I finally said, heck with it, I can't, I can't go this way. But when we do open this up, and I hope it will be today, I will carry a mask around because I realize that businesses who are pretty smart, they're real smart because they do what it takes to get people inside their businesses, whether it be a bar, whether it be an auto shop store, a salon, or anything else, they will do what they need to, to attract the most customers. And even though I don't feel like I need a mask, I don't like a mask myself, that's my personal, personal choice. But I will carry one around at all times, because there'll be a lot of businesses that I want to go in, and they'll require a mask. I think people are smart enough to make those decisions themselves. And I think while we're opening this up, and again, I hope it's today, I think task forces are best, they go ahead and complement that, not set a bunch of edicts. We've had so many edicts. And let's get to the governor for a minute. Don't care what party it is, anything else is not political. But we're talking about negotiating with a man who, when this first came out, he made this statement. And this was when we still thought that the mortality rate was somehow going to be up near SARS or something, up 5% or 10%. He said that by May, 40% of Californians would have it. Well, you know what? All kinds of people asked for his research, where he got that, he never produced it. He never produced it. And after he came out with those series of regulations that we would have to fit, you know, these, you'd have to meet this benchmark, they were ridiculous, and then it came out and said, one death in 14, I mean, you couldn't have one death in 14 days in a county the size of Riverside? How do you negotiate with somebody that sets those kind of goals? Where is there? I mean, from day one, it's like, well, no, no, I have to prove that my initial estimates were true. It became about him. But I'm not scared about the state, because the state has some ways they can make our life miserable, like they did in Yuba County. They came in and they started pulling, you know, liquor licenses and cosmetology licenses, and how dare you go about our edict? Again, that only being 40 miles away from Sacramento. But you know what I'm afraid of? I'm afraid of not taking care of our constituents. And we are their most direct. I've got five out of six, I have six cities in my district, and five of them sent me letters from their councils saying, please open up now, we're dying. It's not just us up here, it's other electeds everywhere. I'm not going to tell schools what to do, not public ones, because again, they have their own school boards. That's up to them. Let them make those hard decisions. Believe me, the five of us up here have plenty on our plates. But today, if we let this go on any longer, and some of the stories I heard today brought me to tears. Earlier, I almost had to get up and go in the other room, because I was losing it, because I felt the pain. And I feel the pain and the fear for all of those who feel that we should keep locked down. But I would implore my colleagues to help me, starting tomorrow, and let's really follow through on some of my ideas, I'm sure they got some of their own, on making our most vulnerable people, especially in the most concentrated areas, the skilled nursing facilities, the assisted living facilities. Let's, don't worry about so much about them getting the infection, let's first get them back to where they can have visitors, because there is one thing that's more important than security, and that's the freedom for them to see their loved ones in their waning days, to be able to have family come up. We can do these things. This is where a county can really help. And then also, set up a good, good program where they're rewarded with bonuses, CNA and other workers inside of skilled nursing facilities and others such. This takes care of the problem without killing the rest of society. And like I say, my motion, I'd like to offer an amended motion to drop all COVID-related, all COVID-related restrictions that the Riverside County has now on businesses and people's free movement, and let's let people make the right decisions. As the sheriff said, remember, I trust everyone. He doesn't trust anyone, and he's saying, let's open it up. So I would ask them, I will put forward the amended motion to Supervisor Spiegel's, where not only do we get rid of all four of these, but we also get rid of all restrictions.
Supervisors? Kevin, Supervisor Jeffries?
Kim, what are the other restrictions that the county has?
Supervisor, this is Dr. Kaiser. There are, other than the ones that are on the Form 11 in front of you, the county has no additional restrictions.
I'm sorry, that, I put that wrong then, that we also get rid of all the governor's imposed restrictions along with it. I'm sorry, that's my bad.
I don't think we have that power, Supervisor.
Yes, you do, Supervisor Perez. You are our leader. We will defend you.
Supervisor Jeffries, did you want to, that's some of that?
As fun as that would be, I don't know how we get rid of somebody else's authority. I just, I don't get that, so.
I would say we have a moral authority to save our dead right now, and they're dying out there. They really are. We have that moral authority.
I don't think anybody's doubting that some of the stuff the governor's doing is not constitutional nor wise, but that doesn't give us the authority.
I think we go there, I think we do fine.
You want to say your piece, Supervisor Jeffries, or I got Supervisor Washington in the queue here as well?
Chuck, go, I'll bring mine in.
Okay, yeah, because I like.
You want me to? Okay. I drafted and provided to everybody today, including staff, actually, this morning, a proposal regardless of how this vote goes on the four items. If the four, three or four items are rescinded... If the four, three or four items are rescinded, my proposal works with that, and if they're not rescinded, it works with that. And so the goal of the proposal that I've drafted, which I am not, I'm not motioning to replace the recension, is that a word? Rescending motion, I would like to ask that it be added to the original motion so that we can direct staff to develop guidelines, not restrictions, kind of follow a best practices model that we would like businesses to utilize so that we can get the governor to reopen it. And those best practices models would be up to the individual businesses to implement, not the county of Riverside. And it also brings in the other suggestions that are listed. If the motion passes, for the removal of vocational education and higher education, that's already accomplished by virtue of the motion that Supervisor Spiegel's introduced. And the short-term rentals, that's in Supervisor Spiegel's motion as well, so those are addressed at this point. So I think it complements the motion that's on the table. It could complement the motion of Supervisor Hewitt, but I'm not sure if mine then goes down in defeat with the challenge from the governor as to whether or not we have any authority to do anything, so, to take away his powers, as fun as that would be.
Well, the funny part is, we do all the enforcement, so his power is powerless if he don't enforce it.
Can you hold your applause?
I would argue that the people in MODOC would disagree with you when the alcohol and beverage control people showed up from the state and the professional licensing for all the hair salon barber folks showed up to shut those folks down. Those weren't county employees, those were state employees.
And so what if we allow them to go ahead and keep selling alcohol here?
Well, we're not stopping anybody from doing anything.
Exactly my point. So let's set down what we're, where we're at. If we want to be there, this is like, again, you cannot negotiate with a gentleman who obviously has, I don't know what is inside it is. I mean, this is craziness. Everybody up here agrees that it's crazy. That's not even close, and he's destroying so many lives.
Supervisor Hewitt, can we allow others to speak as well?
Sure.
Supervisor Washington?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Only occasionally am I been known to go about in fits of emotion. I'll try to keep from doing that right now. I did a lot of crazy stuff when I was flying in the Navy. Some of those things probably in hindsight were kind of silly, especially if I'd gotten shot down. And then I used to have a fantasy that on my last flight at Delta Airlines, that I would take my 737 full of people and fly underneath the Golden Gate Bridge, because I just thought that would be really cool to do. But I knew that if I did it before I was ready to leave, I'd be leaving after I did that. I never did it, in case you were wondering. What's before us is the agenda item is whether we rescind or vote to approve the rescission of the health orders, and there are four of them, and Supervisor Spiegel has very eloquently laid out what our options are. And then in the larger framework, and I should give you a little bit of background, because Supervisor Perez referenced it, none of this has been happening just in the vacuum of the board chambers. There's lots of work that's been going on that many of our citizens are not necessarily aware of. What we've tried to do, and I don't wear a mask because, because I'm afraid, I'm not a fearful person. I flew a Delta plane two days after 9/11. People ask, why aren't you afraid to go back? I said, no, I'm pissed off. I'm pissed off at what those terrorists are doing to try to scare my passengers. I'm not a fearful person. I'm doing this because I believe we have an obligation as a society to try to protect the health and well-being of all of our citizens. And so we've done a good job of that. Did we miss the mark on where we'd be in terms of cases and deaths at this point? Yeah, it was below. I choose to see that as a good thing, that we got below that. I would choose to see that if they were right, that was a bad thing. So now we're ready to move forward. The governor disappointed all of us yesterday with his announcements. We can't achieve two weeks of zero deaths. That's near impossible in the very near term and probably even the very far term. So some of the things that have been going on behind the scenes, my colleagues have elected me to represent Riverside County in the State Association of Counties. Last night, I was on a conference call with about 20 other county supervisors up and down the state at 7:00, a little more than 24 hours ago, and the Department of, California Department of Public Health had a doctor on the call as well as Secretary of Health and Human Services. And it became apparent to me that all of the supervisors who were speaking were upset. They were upset that they had been led to believe that there would be some good news coming out on Thursday and that we would begin to be able to move forward. We have an economic recovery task force team that is countywide. I set up one, and we had our first meeting yesterday from my district with all of my elected representatives, with chambers of commerce, representatives from all five of the tribes in my district, and we were anxious and ready to go. That started 11:00. The governor's announcement came out at noon. When we finished at 12:30, then I went back and found the bad news. So I'm upset. I'm upset because we are ready to go. But I would like to appeal to my colleagues to say, there is a good step forward that we can take, and there's a reckless step forward that we can take. Let's see if there are other counties in Southern California that want to partner with us to go to court, to try to get some sort of movement out of the governor. We will have the power in numbers. The five-county region represents about 50% of the state's population. That may prove more effective for us to try to get some form of, a level of injunction. That was what I presented to my colleagues several days ago, and yet we're not been able to take a vote on that just yet, because that's not been presented formally. But in the meantime, I continue to work, they continue to work, and when I read what came out of Sacramento today against Yuba County and Sutter County, it isn't just the state going in and shutting down barber shops and salons, but also taking away their ABC license to sell liquor. It is us exposing ourselves to potentially losing as much as $100 million in reimbursements from CalOES, from FEMA, to regain and recover some of the expenses and costs we've undertaken in this effort to fight COVID. I'm not willing to risk $100 million of your taxpayer dollars, just because maybe it might make me feel good in the moment to do that, and yeah, sometimes I'd like to do that. But I think a more prudent path forward would be for us to evaluate all of our options, make a good, a good faith effort to try to work with this, push back on the governor, get the state to loosen these things up so we can get our businesses back going, and that could happen as soon as next week. Tonight's vote is about the public health order, and if Supervisor Spiegel wants to hit, move again, because she cleared out your motion, if you'll do that, I'll second your motion that you made. If you want to hit the motion, I'll second it, and at least we've got that on the board. And that's my two cents worth.
I'd like to see if I can amend the motion.
Can I just add one thing to it? The reason I really push for Supervisor Jeffrey's principles for a safe and accelerated reopening of Riverside County is it addresses the need that wasn't brought up, and that is, when we rescind the face masks, we have to let everybody know that within the state and the federal guidelines, and San Bernardino and everybody else, and Orange County, there's a strong encouragement of wearing them, like Supervisor Hewitt said. He may not wear it, but he'll have it at times that he needs it. And we have to push that message, that we are responsible people, and when you need to put it on, then you put it on. And it's very important that we use that language of strongly encouraging appropriate times, and that's included in Supervisor Jeffrey's principles, so.
And if that's your motion, that's my second. I'm sorry, I meant to mention that, but yes, I think we need to send a strong message to encourage people and businesses. And of course, businesses always have the right to go more restrictive if they choose to. If they feel that they want to do an extra measure to protect their employees and their customers, that's their right to do so.
But also public transportation. I know that the RTA is very concerned. You're close quarters. MetroLink now has to have face masks. You're in small quarters. LA Metro, all the different buses and public transit has it. So it's kind of included in this, and that's why I keep going back to the Jeffries.
So I know that Supervisor Hewitt wants to speak, and if I may, make an amendment to the motion.
Maybe.
Which is, I agree with you, but maybe we could say something like rather mandate or recommend it. It's within reason, you know, I mean, when practical. No, I think people would appreciate that. Obviously, you're not going to wear a mask if you're going to be driving your vehicle by yourself, or you're going to be jogging, or, you know, when you're out at the park with your family, if you're by yourselves, but if you happen to go to Costco or Home Depot, perhaps you should. And quite frankly, a lot of those businesses are going to require it. And so I would ask that we take a look at that and say, within reason.
Wasn't appropriate, or?
That's, yeah, I like.
Can you jump in?
Yeah. There was something that you had, though. Can I find your?
I know Supervisor Hewitt's, I think, I think the proposal for the safe and accelerated reopening of Riverside County, I think it achieves what you're looking for without a mandate. It's sort of a personal, personal freedom, personal responsibility approach to it versus a government mandate, and I think it directs staff to work with the business community through the task force for the best practices approach to it, which would then.
I like that, Kevin, and I think what we get out of that is we get more people wanting to do it, out of respect for everyone in our society and whatever challenges they may face, as opposed to people acting in defiance because we tried to mandate it.
I'm sorry, I jumped in before you.
Supervisor Hewitt?
Yeah, I would ask Supervisor Washington if he thought when the governor sent in all those revenuers, or whatever else they call them up there, to shut down those two rogue counties, did you think that was a good thing? Did you, did you like what he did? Were you in agreement with him?
I don't have to have an opinion about whether it's good or bad. He has the, he has the authority to do that, and I don't want Riverside County to be on the receiving end that costs our citizens tens of millions of dollars, and costs the county 100-plus million dollars.
And shutting down our businesses each day probably runs up tens of millions of dollars. It's crazy right now.
Right.
And I would say those are small peanuts compared to what we do, sending the wrong message today. I was elected to protect my constituents.
But not recklessly. We need to look out for them.
When a governor's orders threatens the lives and the well-being and the very futures of my constituents, I don't view him as a friend anymore, and that's what he's doing.
If I could.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, you and I have had a lot of good chats about how to move, how to move the ball and try and save our economy, our employees, our personal freedoms. We are achieving tonight everything that we had hoped to achieve a week ago. We're there. We are not achieving the bigger global fight with what's happening across all 48 counties in California.
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight counties, yeah.
Okay. That's right. That's okay.
Well, maybe he just cut 10 out.
Yeah. Well, Supervisor Stone wanted to move some to another state, so.
Yeah, exactly.
Tonight, the items before us tonight are to win the battle that is at our dais tonight. We can divert and talk about the bigger global fight. I think in tonight's, we take victory tonight, we take a win here for Riverside County and all of its really hard-to-hit families, take this win and then figure out, working with everybody else in the other counties, how do we push back on a governor who has incredible power and actually win and save our state?
I don't know. A tiny little colony did that about 250 years ago.
I agree they did.
You tell me, there are times when people have to say enough is enough, and this is beyond that time. And I will not be complicit in following any of those governor's orders anymore. After what he came out with Thursday, I was fine at waiting until today, after this phenomenal see how he was going to be so gracious and so, oh, yes, you can have this and that, and he went back the other way and even turned it up. And he'd already remembered, bumped up the percentage of the surge rate, I mean, this crazy six phases, all this stuff, no, just let people go back to work, let them make the decisions. This has been something that's been blown up ever since, and it's been used, and been used as a bludgeon to keep us down. We have a lot more power than we think we do.
I would just say that we have a chance tonight, and I can't, I apologize, I shouldn't speak for our chair, I don't know where he is on this vote, but we have an opportunity tonight for a very strong united voice, probably the first. A week ago, it may have been 3-2 or 2-3. Tonight, it might be 5-0. I think we take that win and come back to fight another day.
Not after what I heard tonight.
Well, look, I don't discount that at all, but we need a victory. We need to be able to tell our residents, we've achieved something tonight that's going to help them, and just come back at another day. I mean, look, you're going to vote how you're going to vote, but this is an opportunity for us to sit here united and say, we're not moving forward with any more of these ridiculous ideas that we've done to ourselves. This is a chance to pull back. That's all. Okay?
So I wanted just to state out loud that the best practices, as was written here in the principles for the safe and accelerated reopening of Riverside County, says that best practices should include, but are not limited to, the utilization of social distancing, utilization of glass-like dividers or barriers to protect workers and customers, routine disinfection practices, and in accordance with state and or federal directives, the wearing of gloves and or appropriate facial protections. And obviously, those are best practices, depending on the individuals or depending on the business. And that's the reason why I wanted to once again state that, you know, if it's not a mandate, it's not recommended, it's when practical, when it makes sense. And I think we can, that way, there's a win for the business owners that want to protect their workers and the workers themselves, that want to be protected, and quite frankly, the customers. The customers as well want to go somewhere where they feel they're going to be safe, and I think that's very real. I heard that a lot. I heard that a lot, I heard that from a lot of business owners. And so, that's why I'm really stressing that piece because I think that's critical in moving forward. You know, obviously, I'm not going to, if I'm going to be going somewhere, wherever that may be, for an essential need, I'm going to do my best to social distance. And I am going to wear a facial cover because I see that as practical. I see that as reasonable. And I would argue that potentially, the business probably would not let me in if I didn't have a facial cover. Right? Because they also want to protect their workers or they want to protect other customers. And so, I just want to put that out there once again because I think it's important that we have language that states that. Well, I'm not sure if it says, you know, it says best practices should include, right? But I'm not sure if it says enough where we're letting people know that when it could be applied or within reason. That way, individuals can make that decision on their own.
Well, we could even say highly recommended.
That would be fine.
All right. Yeah, I think San Bernardino went to strongly recommended.
Strongly recommended?
Yeah.
I used that word, yeah. I said encouraged. But we can change that to strongly recommended.
Strongly recommend. And San Diego is doing the same thing. They also did the same thing a couple of days ago.
It's Kevin's document, and he's okay with changing it to strongly recommend. And I'm okay with that as a second, if you're okay with that as a motion.
I am absolutely okay.
All right. Thank you, Kevin, for this good work.
Thank you.
So, we say that... Let me just go ahead and try to take a crack at this and state out loud the motion. Go ahead.
My motion is for the rescind, to direct the Director of Emergency Services and Public Health Officer to rescind the following public health orders. A is only to amend. We're not rescinding that. We're amending it to remove vocational education, higher education. So, it's all schools are closed, K-12. Rescind B, C, and D, and include the principles for safe and accelerated reopening of Riverside County.
With that modified language.
With the modified language of strongly recommend.
And staff has to come back with all of this practices and reopening proposals to formulate it into a policy or guideline for businesses. So, it's, we're going to see it again. But I agree, strongly recommend it is appropriate. Okay.
We good?
Yes, sir.
I'm good. Personal freedom, personal responsibility. Works for me. There will not be any.
What punishment?
It's a move forward. I'm not happy with it at all. And I don't believe this governor has any say over us in any way anymore when he makes that kind of statement. But I will be voting with my colleagues because, I'll tell you what, the one thing that impressed me more than anything, I thought they would hate me forever because I drug them into another six hours of this. But they've impressed me in their way to listen to all of you and everything else, so...
If you're not careful, we're hitting eight.
I will be voting yes also.
With that said, it's approved as recommended. This is just one battle, if you will. This is still a long-term challenge that we have. And this is where I think we all see eye to eye and have agreement in which we do need to push back. And I get that. And I think not only we get that, but San Bernardino County gets it. Ventura County, I can't speak for LA yet, but I know San Diego County does because I had a conversation with county board supervisors from San Diego County. I know that Orange County gets it because I had a conversation with members of the county board of supervisors there as well, as well as San Bernardino. And so, if we unite, right, here, have a unification and pushing back with thresholds that make sense for us, because one size does not fit all. We know that one size does not fit all. And if we can talk about regional variances, that's the language that our governor is talking about. Well, we have many regional variances as well within the County of Riverside. I can tell you right now, in the city of Blythe, they are struggling over there. And their positives are very minimal, and they have no deaths. And so, why can't that be a regional variance? So, we're going to have those conversations. But ultimately, we need to be united here as a county, working with our Economic Recovery Task Force, our public health team, and then all the other counties just have a united front. I understand that we're going to be organizing on Monday. The discussion is taking place, a press conference. A press conference in which the chairs of all the counties are going to be coming together to talk about, you know, what does this mean for us as counties, as a region? What mean, in other words, what the governor is ordering? And then, what makes sense for us as a region? We know we got to get people back to work. We know people are struggling every single day. And so, you know, it's one thing to talk about the public health side of things, which is very, very important. We need to do that. But I tell you, people are going to die from poverty if we continue this way. So, we got to balance it. So, I want to say just thank you. I think, are there any last words from my colleagues?
Real quick, if I may?
Yes, sir.
I want to thank everybody for this participation. I don't think I've ever received 600 emails like I have in the past week. But I want to point out my appreciation to the clerk of the board. She's quite the trooper. Quite the trooper. That's it, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
All right. We good?
Supervisor Perez?
Everybody good?
For this information, we'd like to thank you.
All right, ladies and gentlemen. It seems to me like this meeting is now adjourned. But stay tuned for next week.